Hello, so this is the start of something that I've not really done before. We're going to do a bit of time on Facebook Live this evening and see whether people want to sort of ask some questions and I'll do my best to answer. There's a bit of learning by doing on the technology front because I'm not absolutely sure how I get to see your comments which make your questions. So you might find that I have to sort of use the comments on my phone for that, but we'll see how it goes. There's already 20 odd people watching, which is quite cool. And I've just pressed a button that I shouldn't have done. But with any luck, we'll start taking some questions. There we go, the questions appeal at the bottom. Gemma Heale says, "Hi James", hello. I won't read out everybody who comes online, that would be slightly unnerving. But if you have a question, then pop it in the comments section and away we go. We're in my office up in Westminster, which is still pretty bare. We've sort of not properly moved back in yet for the general election. They sort of make you take everything down before the election happens. But here we are, and the aim was to sort of be here for about 45 minutes and take whatever questions come in. And to ask a question, just pop it in the comments and it pops up on my screen. And we'll see what comes in. "How was the NFU reception in London?" Well, the NFU reception was excellent. That's where I've just been, so someone has been looking on my Facebook page before this. Really good actually. And James Small, the council chairman for Somerset, came up. And so it's good to see him here too. I thought that Michael Gove seemed to be on top of things already. He's clearly very excited about the brief he's got. He understands the importance of British agriculture. And I get the feeling actually that the NFU, as much as they represent all farmers, are quite excited about the fact that he's a big hitter, is really interesting. You know, lots of journalists at the NFU reception. And that sort of hasn't been the same previously. And the other thing that he did, which I thought was really good, is he took lots of questions at the end from anybody who wanted to ask them. And that was really good. "Question about fibre broadband being rolled out to the whole of Highbridge." Yeah, I mean, so Highbridge and Burnham were mostly within the commercial broadband rollout. So when they did the open market review, it was decided that BT, or the market, that BT primarily were going to roll out to those places. I am aware that there are a few places within Highbridge where that commercial rollout hasn't happened. Actually, that's the case in a number of places around the constituency. It's hugely frustrating because the state can't intervene. So you end up with more remote places being connected because the state has subsidised the connection. And whilst places that are in the middle of towns or right on the edge of towns haven't been. I've got a list of all the places that I believe the commercial rollout hasn't yet properly reached. And I will continue to push BT on that. And my view is that if the market doesn't provide, as was expected, then actually they should forfeit their rights to that and it should become part of the state aid programme. Martin, I think you've emailed me about that previously. If it was during the campaign and we haven't come back to you yet, apologies. But we'll do that and make sure that you get a sort of a more accurate answer. But I fear that you're in that sort of Neverland of being within the commercial rollout and therefore beyond the reach of the state intervention programme and we need to try and work that out. Claire asks, "How do we start from doctors and nurses into the NHS so we can keep A&Es, Western A&E, open?" Such an important question. It's hugely frustrating that the money to fund a fully functioning 24-hour day A&E is in the bank and that we've had to close because the CQC have said that there's insufficient consultant support. I think the recruitment issue at Western is different to the recruitment issue for sort of primary and community healthcare in Somerset. I think the issue at Western is the hospital is so small that it struggles to attract enough junior doctors and consultants because the size of the trust is just not enough variety of work for them. And so as I understand it, what would be much better for Western is if it was part of the University Hospitals Bristol Trust or it was part of the Musgrave Trust. And the problem is both of those things have been tried and they both fell through, which leaves Western in a really difficult position. I don't know what the answer is. We've looked at whether or not you can do sort of golden hellos for clinicians coming into Somerset. That may well work in primary and community healthcare. But I fear that the only way of making it work for hospitals is to make sure if not formally, if Western doesn't formally become part of the Bristol or Taunton trusts, that at least it's partnered and there's a sort of sharing of clinicians between the larger trusts in Bristol or Taunton and then to Western. And we'll just need to keep pushing on that. My colleague John Penrose, who is the MP actually for Western, had a meeting with health ministers yesterday. I'm catching up with John tomorrow morning and I'll try and update people once I've heard how that went. "Department that took over the CSA are weeks behind and causing overpayments. Can the government sort this out?" Yeah, so I'm unfamiliar with that as an issue, Helen. If you could contact me at james.hepi.mp@parliament.uk. And if there's a sort of particular issue for you, I'd like to look into that as casework. If there's a wider policy issue, I'll get on it. But it's not something I'm familiar with other than I'm aware from previous dealings with the CSA that they are not always on top of their game. And I'm disappointed to hear if there's even more problems. Would you come back to me on that so I can see more information? "James, what are your thoughts on section 24 tax on landlords? This will displace low income tenants where buy-to-let landlords can no longer afford to retain their property." Daniel, I have to say, I'm not absolutely sure that I know all the detail of that. I will need to come back to you. Again, maybe you could drop me a line on james.hepi.mp@parliament.uk or click on the "Contact Me" button on Facebook. You'll get to me that way as well. I do recall some correspondence on it, but I have to say it's not an issue that's right at the front of my mind. Forgive me. I apologise for not knowing that off the top of my head. But do come back to me and I'll get you a full answer. "What do I think about supporting a footpath along the coast road in Berro linking the new cycle path from Weston to Burnham?" Look, I think that we've made some great progress on the coast path. Getting that connection across the slough at Bree is hugely important. And very obviously, connecting Burnham, Berre, Bree and Weston is really great for our visitor economy. I know that there has been all sorts of discussion over the years about how we get a proper footpath in along the Berre Road. I know that the golf club have been willing to look at a solution. There were sort of complications about sort of people wanting it to be a multi-user footpath for cyclists, horses, pedestrians and everything else. Happy to look at that again. It's a couple of years since somebody last asked me to engage on that, but very happy to do so because I think that that coastal path is hugely important. Not just important for people who sort of want to get around from their holiday parks down to Burnham or up to Bree. But actually, it's an important economic opportunity in its own right to have those coast paths. And I know that officially the coast path goes along the beach, but sometimes in the middle of winter, that's not the most pleasurable walk. So I see absolutely the requirement for that. And I will need to take that up if you want me to. I'm not sure whether you're asking sort of because you're local and you've got a particular interest or whether you're part of a group that's trying to sort of reinvigorate that as an issue. But very happy to support if you need. "What would it help recruitment of GPs into Burnham on sea? This area desperate for more doctors." Absolutely, we are desperate for more doctors. When you look across the constituency, the number of practices that don't have a full slate of GPs is quite worrying. And I know that a lot of practices have done some really interesting stuff with recruiting GP nurse practitioners, paramedics, pharmacists. And to a degree, that absolutely plugs the gap. You know, a lot of the things that people go to a GP for routinely each day can be dealt with by those people. But I'm not sure that we should accept that as the solution. I would rather see us better recruited for GPs, obviously. And as demand grows, then we can sort of meet that increased demand by having the right number of GPs, but also by having all of those sort of supporting staff within a practice. That seems to me to make real sense. How do we get more people in? I think there are a couple of really difficult questions to ask. As I understand it, from speaking to junior doctors who are sort of looking at going off into general practice or even those who are training as GPs, many of them are put off by the sort of equity partnership models that a lot of practices, particularly in rural areas and market towns, still operate, whereby you effectively become a partner in the business when you join the practice. A lot of GPs, new GPs nowadays, want to be, they just want to be salaried. They want that sort of certainty. And it's interesting that you are starting to see a difference between how well recruited some of the sort of chains of GP practices, where all of their doctors are sort of salaried employees, that they are better recruited than some of the sort of partnerships. And that might be an answer. I've mentioned this in my press release last week about the warfarin testing. But in Lincolnshire, they've had a sort of golden hello thing, where they've sort of paid people a sign-on bonus for when they've become a clinician. That may be an option, but then does that sort of just inflate things? Do you do something to sort of limit incomes for locums? So you sort of remove that incentive for people to be a locum and encourage them instead to be a contracted signed-on GP? There are all sorts of things we need to look at. I also think that, you know, I had a long chat with the practice manager at Burnham the other day. And I know that one of the things that really frustrates GPs is the amount of paperwork that they have to do that isn't directly related to people's healthcare. It's related to their PIP assessments, their DLA, or it's related to a housing application. And a lot of the time, the GPs are under no compulsion to do that stuff. It's just that they sort of feel that they need to. And sometimes the council will even come back on maybe a housing application and say, "Oh, well, we need a note from the doctor about that." We just need to be clear about what the role of GPs are and whether some of that paperwork is unnecessary and the impact that has on their time. There's lots to be done. It's a massive challenge because we're not just talking about one or two vacancies. I think we're talking about four or five within Burnham and Highbridge alone. And I know that there are more in Wells, there are some in Shepton, there's some in Glashen Free. So, you know, there are vacancies across the constituency and I suspect across all of Somerset. And we're going to have to work hard to come up with the right steps to make it more attractive. And locally, more established GPs are going to have to be realistic about what changes might need to be made to their business models in order to make them more attractive for GPs coming in who perhaps have different ambitions and want a different employment package to people who were going into general practice 20 or 30 years ago. "What new facilities will the second reservoir at Axbridge have? There is no disabled access currently on the hard path. Will the new reservoir have a decent walking path or a café even? And separation from sheep for walkers, runners and cyclists?" So off the top of my head, from when this was last sort of on my desk 18 months, two years or so ago, because as I understand it, the second reservoir has been paused indefinitely unless you've seen something in the last few weeks that I haven't spotted. Because Bristol Water Utilities Companies generally were sort of given a sort of limit on the profit they could make, I think if that's the reason. And that meant that Bristol Water changed their sort of capital works programme and decided they weren't going to proceed with the second reservoir at that point. As far as I saw it, there was indeed sort of multi-user pathways all around it and they seem to be quite well landscaped. I'm surprised to hear there's no disabled access. That's definitely an issue that I'd be happy to take up with Bristol Water. But as far as I could tell, it was going to be quite a decent leisure facility and was sort of going to be, you know, much more free-form than the current, than the first reservoir. The bit that I was really disappointed about was the loss of the beach, if I'm honest with you. I know that's sort of, most people go, "It's not one of the biggest issues." But when I found out they'd taken the beach out, I was a bit disappointed. I thought that could have been a really great visitor attraction and would have been hugely popular locally. But I understand that Bristol Water would have carried all of the duty of care for people using it. But still, it would have been a really great thing, I think. And as for a café, dunno. But Tammy, if you're looking for a business opportunity, I wouldn't mind betting that if you proposed to Bristol Water that you wanted to put one there, they wouldn't be at all against it. Let me know if I can help. Where are we? Yeah, Helen, thank you about the CSA. That is pretty disturbing. Do come back to me and I will pick that up. "June, we're both 65 plus and been trying to get a council house, but keep being told no way. But no one, Somerset people, got one within six weeks and have been waiting over 10 years." June, as ever, the allocation of social housing all comes down to your banding. I don't know what banding you are. You'll need to, I think, maybe drop me an email to sort of tell me what's what. The banding, I can then sort of ask the council to look at your banding again if you wish. But drop me a line. I think that there is an issue over the availability of social housing in Somerset. There's no doubt about that. It is really important that we build more. And I know that people will jump on and say that there's a plan then to sell it off. I do also think it's quite empowering for people to be able to buy their home. What we need to be doing clearly is making sure we're maintaining an appropriate level of supply so that people are getting into housing that is appropriate to their needs. But June, if you can email me the specifics of your housing application, I'm happy to look into it. Because I couldn't tell you why you've been waiting when others have got something so quickly without knowing your particular circumstances. "Claire, do I think that Michael Gove was the best choice from Foreign Minister considering he's the most hated MP in education and his previous voting history?" Look, I think Michael Gove is, if nothing else, he is very strong-willed and is a reformer. And to some, that brings with it a zeal that is not so popular. To others, he does great things. What I think is that for too long, DEFRA has been one of the backwaters in Whitehall. And I think that his appointment, when he's clearly a very high-profile minister, his appointment as DEFRA secretary is quite a departure, actually. I mean, it was very interesting to see the number of journalists who were in the NFU reception this evening because they wanted to hear what Michael Gove had to say. And I've been to plenty of farming receptions in this place which have not had anything like that profile. So in that respect, having a high-profile, big-hitting minister like Michael Gove in DEFRA, elevating the profile of that department with it elevating the profile of food, farming, fishing, the environment, I think is a good thing. I think that he absolutely understands the challenges ahead. He understands, you know, I mean, we put right now into the common agricultural policy, I think we put in three pounds for every one pound we get back. And that is a really inefficient way, clearly, of subsidising agriculture. I think Michael Gove gets that. And I wouldn't mind betting that we'll end up with a much more efficient and fairer way of supporting British farmers once we no longer have to support those who are in the EU. So yeah, I think he did well. And I, speaking to some of the sort of NFU leaders, they seemed pretty enthusiastic about having him as their Secretary of State as well. So let's see how he does. "David, how are you? I enjoyed our chat in Axbridge on Saturday. As we withdraw from the EU and some of the money we pay into the EU goes towards the training of nursing doctors that will come to work in the UK and pay tax, how will you facilitate them working in the UK after our exit?" Yeah, I mean, I think that the drop that we've seen in the number of EU clinicians applying to work in the NHS is clearly very worrying. And, you know, people will say, and rightly so, that there are plenty of other places in the world from where we can recruit clinicians. And if we've got an immigration system that we are fully in control of, we can prioritise the recruitment of clinicians. And frankly, the country we get them from is much less important. What matters is that recruiting the right number of people into the right posts in the right places around the country. I know that Yeovil District Hospital, for example, have just had a big recruitment drive, I think in the Philippines, off the top of my head, somewhere in South East Asia, and very successfully recruited a number of nurses. The whole point, I think, of what we're trying to do with recovering control of our borders and our immigration policy is not to make it impossible for people from outside the UK to come and work here, but to make sure that we're recruiting the right people into the right jobs in the right places. And very obviously, clinicians within NHS is going to be an important part of that. That all said, I'm really disappointed to see the number of, that number of EU clinicians applying for jobs in the UK decline. Very obviously, that is the most obvious place for us to recruit from. And I would like to make sure that we've got an immigration policy post Brexit that at the very least favours those who are coming from our most near neighbours because invariably they are going to be the people who are most inclined to apply for jobs in the UK. How, as sort of part of that about taxes, pay money into the EU, go towards training. So I don't think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that there's a sort of EU element to the funding of clinical training. But I don't think that's the case. But this whole idea that when we leave the EU, we've suddenly got 350 million quid a week or whatever it was to spend in the US, that's clearly not true. But, you know, it is arguable that when we're not spending all that money on the EU, there may well be more money to spend on stuff in the UK. But we'll see how the Brexit process unfolds. Deborah, "With an application for a phone mast on the Bath Road, Wales back for a second time in six months. What are your views on masts in residential areas? There's a huge worry about this and an alternative site exists owned by Mendip District Council which would serve operationally without being close to people's homes." So look, I mean, I think that as ever with planning issues, there is, what's important is a strong local voice. The two statutory consultees in the planning process therefore are Wales City Council and the district councillors for the wards in which these masts are proposed. So down on the Strawberry Way, I don't know if Strawberry Way is in Wales St Cuthbert or Wales Central. It may well be the boundary between the two. So it's either John North or John Osman and Harvey Sigs. And for the one up on the Bath Road, it's Danny Unwin and Roy Mackenzie. So clearly, those are the two people for Wales Central, Wales St Cuthbert and for Wales St Thomases who have a sort of statutory role to play in that planning process. And similarly, Wales City Council. From my personal perspective, I think we've got to strike a very fine balance between getting the connectivity that we need. There are still too many not spots, too many places around Somerset that don't have decent 3 or better still 4G mobile phone coverage. And we've got to make sure that we are getting those places connected. But very obviously, there's a planning process that needs to be adhered to and those masts need to be put up with the consent of residents. I've been asked to engage in this as a rule. I don't engage too much in planning matters because it's something of which I have no control. But what I have done is reflected to the council, the concerns that people have shared with me. And I know that they will take those into account. If you want to come back to me, Deborah, with some sort of more specific concerns, please do. I'm very happy to pass those on. But I'm very much aware of the opposition to those masts. I'm surprised to see the Bath Road one back because I thought that had already been turned down. But both of those masts, the one on Bath Road and the Strawberry Way, if there's specific concerns that people want me to sort of amplify to the council, very, very happy to do so. But don't just send it to me. Make sure you send it to your ward councillors who are statutory consultees and also to the city council who have a very clear role to play in that as well. Yep, June, thank you. I thought that might be the case with your banding. If you send me an email with the details, I could ask them to look at whether that's the right banding for you. "What's your view on hard Brexit compared to soft Brexit?" I think that the reality is that these are pretty false labels, in my view. You know, the idea that a hard Brexit, so leaving the single market, leaving the customs union, leaving the jurisdiction of the European Court, the argument that that sort of means that we then sort of cut adrift and have no trading relationship with the EU, I don't agree. I mean, I think that if we were to pursue that course of Brexit, there's a very strong probability that we will then end up with a free trade agreement with the EU that would give us the ability to trade with the EU pretty seamlessly. And I genuinely believe that is possible. We're the fifth largest economy on earth. I think the EU, I think, you know, already, actually, this week, we've seen a slightly different tone to the negotiations between the UK and the EU. And I think that as we get beyond the German general elections in the autumn, that tone will become even more businesslike because the politics of it, I think, starts to sort of dial down and the reality of Brexit starts to dawn on both sides. So I genuinely think that we can end up with a trade deal. If a soft Brexit is the continuation of one or all of the customs union, the single market and the jurisdiction of the European Court, I think that the problem is that the EU have been clear that that's just not on the table. And it's entirely in the EU's gifts to make their rules. If we, you know, the EU have said that you cannot be a member of the single market without free movement of people. And the control of our borders was one of the big drivers in the Brexit vote. And if you look at both the Tory and the Labour manifestos from two weeks ago, it was clear that both of the main parties absolutely understood the requirements to achieve some sort of control over our borders. And, you know, and they needed to say that because lots and lots of people in this country are concerned about the pace of immigration, the impact that's having on our economy. Now, I would be the first to say that in Somerset, I don't think we see that particularly acutely. In fact, I think we rely very heavily on migrant seasonal labour. And I've been pushing very hard in Parliament for, in the tourism industry and in the agricultural industry, sort of seasonal work permits to be able to meet that need. But I think fundamentally, the sort of soft Brexit that people talk about, this sort of ability to cherry pick the bits of the single market, new membership that we want and others that we don't, that's just not on offer and therefore it's not something that I think we can even try to achieve. What we need to do is to accept the rules of the game are that you've got to leave the single market, leave the customs union, leave the jurisdiction of the European Court and then try to negotiate a trade agreement and work permits and immigration policies and all those things that sort of deliver what's best for our economy. But you've seen in the news that this is a source of a lot of debate. And you might reasonably criticise that to be having that debate when the negotiations are already underway in Brussels would seem a little late in the day. And I wouldn't in any way disagree with you. We need to be much clearer, much quicker about what it is that our objectives are in this area. "Clive, I'm not sure what that connects to, but come back to me if you want to elaborate." "Jan, could facilities be made at Maddock Slade end of Burnham Beach? If to wit, the beach with a dog, there is nothing down at that end, i.e. toilets or café." Jan, interesting question. I, my sense is, and people from Burnham can jump on and tell me that I'm wrong, but my sense is that the really great thing about Burnham Beach is that it offers it all. You know, down by the jetty, there is everything. There were jet ski concessions on Saturday afternoon, Sunday afternoon, sorry. There was an ice cream van, there's obviously the Bayview Café and all the pubs and the fish and chip shops and everything just on the Esplanade. So you've got all of that and you've got the loos and the showers and the tourist information centres. So you've got all of that at that end of the beach. But then the other end of the beach is unspoilt, you know. There are no facilities, but that sort of makes it much quieter and much nicer. Well, nicer in my view. I just think it's great up there, that it's sort of a bit quieter and... great up there, that it's sort of a bit bit quieter and and all of that stuff isn't there. Um I, I I mean, we can ask Sedge more about putting loos and things up there, but my sense is that to put loos in a cafe up there um might just sort of remove the balance a bit for the beach. But um come back to me maybe on email if you sort of disagree and and want me to sort of look at that in another way and happy to sort of bounce it to the Burnham Chamber of Commerce, get their views and Burnham Town Council. But I quite like the way that Burnham Beach has has the best of both worlds, really. Um but that's just my personal view. What are your thoughts on the poor uptake for nurse training to students not able to? Yes, it's interesting. I um so the the issue of NHS subsidies came up a bit during the campaign, particularly in the hustings. So I sort of went away and asked, you know, has there been any uh downturn in the number of applications for nursing courses? And the answer was no. Um that the, there'd been the same number, in fact, I think maybe even a slight increase um in the number of people applying for nursing courses, um even once the bursary scheme had ended. And as I understand it, uh and again, I'm ready to be corrected, but as I understand it, that was because the ending of the bursary scheme was meaning that we were able to target support much more for those who were unable to 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 afford to embark on the training in their own right. But but the, to your question generally about sort of what about the poor uptake, as I understand it, the number of nurses um has remained exactly, uh the number of people applying for nursing courses has remained exactly uh what it should be. Or what it was even, forgive me. Uh Nick, on the eve of the Queen's speech, party is still prepared to cooperate with the DUP in order to maintain remaining government. This election result was surprising for all of us and there's no clear resolution without an outright majority for any party. However, I'm shocked and appalled that we've lost. Lost a bit at the end of your question, shocked and appalled. I think you're 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 not a fan, Nick, I know, of the um of the deal with the DUP. I think that the parliamentary arithmetic is really interesting. Um the reality is that the the Conservatives uh can only, um you know, we could go as we are with three hundred and fourteen, I think it is, uh seats. And the only way that we would be beaten uh in the voting lobbies is if Labour, uh Lib Dems, SNP, Plaid Cymru, Greens, uh and all of the Northern Irish parties, including the DUP, were to vote together to defeat us. I think that that's the arithmetic. Um and the only way that that wouldn't be the case is if Sinn Féin took their seats. But I don't think they're going to do that. And I'm not sure that even Jeremy Corbyn wants to be an inelectoral um group with with Sinn Féin. Um it is really difficult. I mean, it was difficult in twenty ten when I think Labour were uh making approaches to the DUP. And clearly, it's difficult now. The DUP's politics, particularly their social agenda, it's not my politics, that's not, it's not what I recognise and I would resist vigorously any attempt for their social stuff to make it into government legislation. But that won't happen because this is a confidence and supply arrangement rather than a formal coalition. So there's no sort of going through one another's manifestos and working out what's in or out. This is a um this is a much more pragmatic engagement in order to ensure that key government legislation passes. Um it doesn't sit comfortably with me. Uh as I've said, there are, there is the mass within the House of Commons that means that the DUP would have to vote with Labour to defeat um the number of seats we've got right now. Um and I wish that we weren't having to go into co- uh into into a partnership with the with the DUP, but um I fear that at times during this parliament, votes are going to get very tight. And being a minority government would be impossible to get stuff done. And therefore, that confidence and supply relationship is um is necessary. Can we have an email link that works for you? You can indeed, Tim. Uh james dot heepe dot mp at parliament dot U K. Uh it comes through to my phone. If you want to send me an email right now, I can tell you I've got it whilst um whilst this is all going on. Um Deborah, I've written to you about mast, uh third, please come and speak to people here and via the site. Uh deal, I'll come, we'll get in touch and um and we'll come and have a look. But as I, as I said, um all that I can really do is sort of amplify your concerns to to the council uh and to your ward members and to the city council. Um they don't ask me, whenever I contribute to a planning process, um I'm effectively contributing just as a member of the public. Um I'm not a, I'm not a statutory consultancy. But I'm very happy to come and have a look if you want to show me um show me the land. Um can you give any updates on the sixty-seven between Burnham and Wells? Um you wrote to me, you've got my reply, uh relies on, yeah. So um as you know, um the, I thought that was Tim Marks, but not quite. Um the uh you did write to me and uh you got my reply at the time, which was when we were trying to get the sixty-seven continued. It's hugely frustrating because of course, had weather busts not gone bust, um then none of this would have ever been an issue, but we are where we are. Um as I understand it, uh the Mendip Community Transport Alternative is working for some, but not for others. Um I canvassed in Woking and in uh Hinton and Bleedney uh and obviously in Wedmore as well during the campaign. Um and I met some people who said, actually, the Mendip district, the Mendip Community Transport option is working okay. Others said that it was um that it was too often full uh and that they weren't able to get on it uh and that they found the timetable restrictive. I think, a- and then obviously the bit between Wedmore and Burnham is frankly more challenging still. So the sort of Wedmore to Wells end, um I think that, you know, supply follows demand and if um and if the occupancy numbers on that minibus that Mendip Community Transport are are offering uh is, uh the the demand is obviously higher, then I think there's an argument for saying, well, look, let's increase the size of the bus or let's increase the frequency um on the timetable. Um and um and we can sort of, we can look at that. Uh on the other end of the route, and I'm not sure, Sarah, which end of the route you're from, um but I think that the the connection between Wedmore and Burnham is much more challenging. Um having seen the passenger numbers, that end of the route was used much less other than in the sort of final three or four miles for people who are using it to get up into Burnham from sort of Markeith, Huntsville uh and around there. Um I, it it remains on my uh on my list of things that we're working on. Um I spoke to the county council about it a couple of weeks ago during the campaign, in fact, when it came up. Uh and um and will continue to push. Um it is, the frustration that I have is that if if the sixty-seven isn't there, there is no way of getting across the Wales constituency without going via Bristol, Western Supermayr or Bridgewater. Uh and I just think that's ridiculous. And I know that the Wales constituency is just sort of arbitrary administrative area. But it just seems ridiculous to me that the only way to get from Wells to Burnham would be to go up along the Cheddar Valley to Western and then down the eight, down on the um twenty-one through Breen. Um or to go down to Bridgewater and back up on the twenty. Or to go all the way up to Bristol on the uh on the Mendip floor and then come back down on the train. That's ludicrous. Um and I'd like to see either the sixty-seven restored or the other thing I'm looking at, which won't help you necessarily if you're in any of the villages along the sixty-seven. But I still don't understand why there's not a bus that runs along the A thirty-eight um which at least would then connect with the one seven six as it comes up from Wells through Cheddar and Axebridge and on into Wincup. Um but, you know, we've got, the 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 laydown of bus routes in the Wales constituency is is really poor, particularly east-west. Um and I continue to work on it. Not least because a lot of people are living in villages that are, that were served by a bus that now aren't and they don't drive. And frankly, once that bus route went, they're cut off. Um so it remains quite a high priority to try and find a solution for that. But one that can be delivered in a way that makes sense to the county council because the sixty-seven was requiring a a lot of subsidy. Um and clearly, we've got to find a way of doing it that 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 requires less. Um Priscilla, would you agree the EU would suffer probably more than us? We import more from them than we sell. Most of the coals, cars sold in Britain are from various EU countries. Well, Priscilla, I I I have sort of said earlier on, I I think a free trade agreement is really likely. Um I don't know whether the EU would suffer more than us or we would suffer more than the EU. What I do know is that we both have a mutual interest in coming to an arrangement that works for um for 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 both sides. Um and, you know, you're right that we um we import more from them than we sell. I prefer it the other way around. I prefer our balance of payments was was uh was was the other way around, of course. But but that does indicate that there's going to be a significant hit. We're the fifth largest economy on earth. And if you all of a sudden impose tariffs on our trade um with Germany and with France and with Italy, that has impacts on German, French and Italian manufacturers as much as it has an impact on ours. Um so like I say, I I'm sure that we'll end up with a free trade agreement. Because that, you know, those who say that this is an impossibility, that, you know, the EU is just going to get everything it wants and we're going to get nothing. I I just say to them, you know, take a little bit more pride in what we are as a country. We're the fifth largest economy on earth. And we can stand on our own two feet. That doesn't mean that I want us to be isolationist and often on our own. But I'm entirely confident about our ability to stand up in the world. And, you know, I'm confident that the EU will want to trade with us because we are, um because our economy is very valuable and they will want to access British consumers. Uh Simon, is there an update on superfast broadband for the remainder of Shepton Mallet? Uh and upgrades of the A three O three and any railway improvements to central Mendip? Blimey heck, Simon. Um so an update to superfast broadband, Shepton again was mostly part of the commercial rollout. I don't know if you were on earlier when I was responding to Martin from Highbridge. Um but the problem with Shepton is that it was identified for commercial rollout. A lot of it has been done, but there are pockets that haven't. I know about the bit down at Leg Square and we're working on that. Um but let me know where particularly is not yet connected and we can sort of have a look at that. Um and as I said earlier on, my view is that the companies that um, you know, where there's been the open market review and an area has been identified for commercial rollout. If the market has failed, it should be forfeited and passed into the state aid um programme so that there can be an intervention to get that sorted. Um the three O three continues um uh to progress. My understanding is that there will be spades in the ground uh in the first quarter of twenty twenty. Um and that mercifully, they have decided to delink the project so that each part of the A three O three is seen as a project in its own right and goes ahead once all the consultations and everything and environmental studies are done. And we don't end up with a tunnel at Stonehenge just holding the whole thing up. Um because that, as I understand it, for years has been the issue. Um so that's sort of, that that modularisation of the programme should make it uh much quicker to uh to make progress. Uh and railway improvements for central Mendip. Do you know, I would absolutely love to see a sort of Mendip Parkway or mid-central Somerset Parkway station. Um either sort of as a spur coming in off the main line in towards the sort of back end of Glastonbury Street or to use the existing quarry lines and the East Somerset Railway Line um to have a sort of Parkway Station just to the east of Shepton Mallet. Either would be great. Um the reality is, I mean, I've sort of floated both with Network Rail um at the end of meetings when I've sort of just wanted to share my mad ideas. Um we're a long way off that, but it would be amazing if we could do it. Um if you get out a set of um of calipers and start sort of plotting circles on maps, you'll see that we've got one of the highest concentrations of Eng- in England of people that live more than um ten miles from a railway station. Uh and that's ridiculous when we're actually sort of, you know, we're not in the middle of nowhere. We're just over the hill from Bristol. Um and yet, our rail connectivity is so poor. That's interesting. So Priscilla says that there were toilets at the end of the Esplanade, um but they were never used and they were sold off and turned in hazard. I didn't know that. Um uh as I said earlier on, I I quite like the fact that the beach has two separate characters. Um but thanks, let me know. And why don't you get in touch? Be really interested to take that conversation forwards. They may know Lynn. I think that probably connects with something earlier on about, not quite sure though. Um let me know. Uh hello, hello, hello. Uh Nick, no problem. That's what we're here for. Priscilla, thank you. Um blimey heck, it's forty-two minutes gone. Um so unless anybody's got any final questions, what would be really helpful, um is, this is a sort of slightly surreal experience. There's probably people walking past outside my office wondering what on earth is going on because I've just been sat here talking pretty constantly for um for forty-three minutes. But i- if you think this is a good way of keeping in touch with you, um then let me know. Uh and, you know, I've seen a few angry faces going across the bottom of the screen. I've seen a few thumbs ups. Um but drop me an email or comment uh and let me know. And maybe we, I don't know whether we do this every week or every other week. Um give me your thoughts on what the sort of right frequency is. But I'm very happy to do this and um if people think it's helpful, then then so be it. I uh I think as well, if you scroll back up, I've answered just about every question. Might not be the answer necessarily that you all wanted. Um but I'll try not to dodge any questions. Um and if it's something really niche and I don't know the answer, like the chap who asked about section twenty-five landlord taxes, I I just need to go away and read up on some stuff on that, remind myself of the issue. But I will. And if you come back to me, uh and then I can, then I can give you a more informed answer. Um but everybody sort of is 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 thanking me presumably because they want to get away uh and eat some food. Um and so with that, I will say that thank you very much indeed um for watching. We'll do more. We've had about sort of, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five people uh watching on and off all the way through. Uh and um and that to me is more than worthwhile. Uh it's more than turn up when I go and sort of park myself in a village hall uh and offer to answer questions for a similar length of time. Um so we'll do this again. Uh and um we'll we'll schedule a next one for a week or so's time and look forward to seeing you then. Thanks very much indeed. Bye bye.